It's supposed to snow now.
Bernie Akers joining us today.
I'm with next link Ebony and I are partners.
Yes.
I think just those two are on him.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, it's nine AM please put in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Morning.
Go ahead and call this meeting to order. I need approval of the agenda. Is there any deletions or corrections or additions? Seeing none, we're in order for a motion.
Also moved second.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We need approval of Monday, March twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three minutes.
Let them over and then see no changes. Did you? I'll make a motion to approve the Monday, March twenty-seven minutes. Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. First item on the agenda is National Vietnam War Veterans Day Presentation. Presented by Don Berwitz.
This will be the VFW.
The VFW, okay.
We need you here to present it for you.
Okay. Yeah.
Ready? Everybody smile. You have bigger smile than that.
Thank you guys for, for your service and everything you have done and thanks for. Well, we're gonna keep it nice and safe until after the remodel. We kind of are gonna be the traveling board of supervisors. We do not want this to get ruined.
You guys are phenomenal job. Thank you very much.
And thank you for what you've done and for that means.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for serving you. Really helped me out. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you.
You guys are more than welcome to sit through this five-year plan with secondary roads.
What, it's always exciting to, to listen to. It's actually exciting to listen to.
All right, second item on the agenda is secondary roads. We have to review and approve fiscal year twenty-four Iowa's DOT five-year program and budget. Good morning, Zach.
Morning.
Like this, this is good for people like me that can't see very well.
Well. These, uh. The map does come out with some of this Excel spreadsheet I create because it's a lot easier to call them color-coded than the actual program that they, you print out. It kind of summarizes everything a little bit better, so.
All right, five-year program.
So I guess starting off a little bit, I know there's a couple new supervisors here, but this is a best guess of what we're trying to accomplish. It, it's as the accomplishment year would be the, the year coming up, just the year twenty-four. And then every subsequent year, four more years after that. It's the closer it is the accomplishment year, the more likely we're trying to get it all done. But as you get out, those things slide around and move. There's been projects that are on there, been on there for a long time, and there's been one reason or another, whether there's other projects that have popped up that become more greater need, or whether it's a funding situation or whatever it might be. So that's the first part, I guess, I'll, I'll say. This is, the fiscal year twenty-four is a little bit different than what we did in the local budget. I've added a couple of projects. I'll have to do a budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-four to add those in. It's no cost to, from the local side, it's two box projects that are you gonna be using federal aid? But they're they're off system, which means we get to pay for them locally and then get reimbursed. So it's just a pass, we pass through dollars, so. But at any time through this, ask questions, let me know, and we'll try and answer the best I can. Three of the projects on this fiscal year twenty-four were, were what we talked about and at the, when we did our local budget as far as construction, the fiscal year twenty-four right away for the M sixty-six, the shoulders, shoulders, and then the asphalt. So those three are in there. Again, that right away, hopefully some of that or most of that will get done yet in this year twenty-three. It's in here because I didn't know how much we'd be able to get done. The shoulders is something we're looking at, hopefully we're able to let this late spring, summer for, to do yet this fall is our, our hope. And then the asphalt would be something we would be looking at doing next year. Still fiscal year twenty-four obviously, but next the, the map corresponds color codes with, with this spreadsheet for the most part, so. Get questions or where things are at, let me know. The two structures. P seven is a small bridge that we'll, we'll be looking at replacing with a box cover. That's down just west of Pen Rapids. B fifteen is another bridge that we'd be looking to replace with a box cover as well, a little larger box cover.
And are these the two pastors?
These are the two pastors, yep. And I can explain a little bit more, but if it's on the foreign-to-market system, which there's a map that shows which roads are on the foreign-to-market system. But if it's on the foreign-to-market system, you can take the money directly out of your bridge account. If it's off the foreign-to-market system, then you have to pay for it locally and then get reimbursed. So you can still use the money, it's just you have to show the debit and credit, I guess, through, through your local budget, so. I don't know how much detail you want to go into. That's kind of what I have fiscal year twenty-four, and I can run through the subsequent years. Maybe not quite as much detail, but at least run through what we're using for funding and what we have come up with here.
How much right away do you have to get down there? Do you want in acres?
Are you talking about the T M one project?
I'm thinking roughly ten acres altogether, but don't quote me on that gene, I'd have to look. It varies a little bit in spots. We're trying to buy, you know, from right away and not go in and out, but there's places where we have to do a little bit because of what it, what it entails for borrows.
And we may have to, you know, to cost the property, maybe you have to keep that slim down too.
Well, and we're trying to do that a little bit. We did get the appraisals redone, so I do have those back. They obviously did go up, but it's reasonable, I think. So we're working now to kind of prepare those plots to try to get those put together and, and hopefully we'll start talking landowners here soon and go from there.
Again about the borrow, so you might need more land.
There's some places where we're, where we're gonna be borrowing and getting, getting material from that those need to be a little bit bigger some, and whether we're buying it all or whether it may be needed to be a construction easement for a time too. So it depends, and that's something we're kind of putting the finishing touches on right now, so.
You're hiring all the earthwork done, you're not doing any of it?
Correct. It'd be, this would be something we would, most of it would be like scraper type work where we can haul it that way. There'd be a little bit that would be trucked or hauled to the north end and just because of how it lay out, so.
What is, uh? This county line is that L twenty-five is that bridge?
That's current average, yep. Correct, correct. If it's on the county line, it's a, it's our bridge to inspect and maintain, I guess, if you want to call it that. But when, anytime generally, the, the rules benefit you over a thousand dollars, you split the cost. If it's under a thousand dollars, then the county that's kind of in charge, it just takes it very little. That's kind of a rule of thumb, but in this case, if we would split it, we're looking at different options for that one, whether that's something, that's probably gonna be a box covered as well. So whether we just let it, or I know Prophet has some ability to do more things than we do because they do have a crane, so they might be able to help us. Maybe we can do this project jointly together. So I'm still working on that out with Prophet and kind of trying to figure out how that sums it up. So it may even wrap off the point graph and something we can do with maintenance funds. We can do it just locally maintenance-wise, but we'll see what that involves. And that amount in there right now is half of what that would be.
That price to do it.
Right. The other projects on in twenty twenty-five, we do have some, some pavement resurfacing. E twenty-six from seventy-one east to north of Litterdale and then down into Litterdale is a, a big chunk of that one. That is one that we'd be looking at putting paved shoulders on like we have in some of the last road we've done. Due to the, the traffic volume and the, their shoulders are there for that already. We may have to do a little bit of work going into Litterdale from the north. Some, some shoulder work there, but I mean, this would be using foreign-to-market dollars. Also looking at possibly being, being able to do E twenty-six from the Maple River Road over to seventy-one as well, that's three miles. I know they're getting beat up pretty bad. Part of it depends on what construction costs do, whether we have enough funds to be able to do that as well, so we're evaluating that as well. From Maple River through, Maple River Road through, through Mont Carmel to seventy-one. To seventy-one.
Okay, gotcha.
It'd be, what is that, N?
N thirty-eight.
E twenty looks like on there, N twenty, E twenty, or E twenty-six?
It's right underneath whatever it is.
Okay.
I think it's, it's in twenty, I think it's N thirty-eight.
Oh, I see, you're saying that one, hey, hey, hey.
It's basically from, from west of Mount Carmel.
I thought you said Maple River is why.
I call the Maple River the road.
Okay, that's about Mount Carmel.
Yes, yes.
Make that clear.
One forty, one forty-eight. So that would be, that's one point two million that we're estimating for that. And again, using foreign-to-market dollars for that as well. So we've, those would be done in conjunction if we do them both. Also have a, a box project in there. This is a small bridge. It does not qualify for federal aid funding. This would be the N six, seven RCB. This one be, is north of Frida. I believe this is the one that's a, it's a wooden box cover right now apparently, so. The other two projects we have in here, looking to try to possibly diamond grind N fourteen, so from, this would be the Halber Road from Highway thirty south and, and west to Halber. We do have some patching we need to do before that, but it's something I think we're gonna be able to do with our own crews over the next couple of summers and do that with our own, our own maintenance funds. And then we'd also do the one mile of concrete on M sixty-eight north of one forty-one at the same time. These are some I don't have real great numbers on that yet. I'm trying to do some more digging into what that's gonna cost. I know cost of that has, has went up since the last time that I've done anything like that when I was in Calhoun's, Calhoun, but
Might want to explain this, we've never done this in Carroll County, but just had experience up in Sac.
Yeah, in Calhoun County, we did it. We did about twenty miles of it. We did, well, I guess they did, we did three miles and then twenty miles in a different project, but basically it's a, it's a, you don't take off a lot. You take off anywhere from maybe as small as an eighth inch in some places to a quarter, up to maybe a half inch. But basically you, you patch out all the dips first and then come through and try to grind off all the humps. They use a proflometer and, and find out where all those pumps are, I guess, or high spots. And, you know, roughly ninety percent of the road would be brown when it's all said and done. Sometimes that varies depending on the road and how it works, but it's, it's, uh, it's worked out really well. Want to drive a couple of roads where it's been done, you go north of Lanesboro. Four miles from the Carroll, Carroll, Calhoun County line up to one seventy-five. And then also going south of Roarville and sixty-five, going into Green County, there's four miles there that were done. And then we did another twelve miles going east of Twin Lakes on D twenty-six, so.
You overlay it then or not?
Diamond grind it and then you come back and seal it up and there's your road. What we found back then, it was about a third of a posse of an asphalt overway. That didn't include patching, that was the grinding and the sealing. I don't know if that's the same posse now. I think it probably still would be similar to that, just because asphalt cost has gone up and the, the cost for asphalt over here a lot higher than what they were too, so. I believe the Halber Road is a seven-inch pavement and demanding miles of eight-inch pavements, which is less thickness there that we can grind off that little bit. When we didn't count them, we only had six-inch pavements and did it, we were a little weary whether that was gonna work, but it seems to be holding up pretty well. But it, it's just another tool in the toolbox type of thing. You still can come back and overlay it afterwards if you want to at some point in time, but hopefully you can get some years out of it and make it a smoother road, so.
Albert, Albert Road is horrible, so that'd be good. Maybe not in a vehicle, we pull a car trailer behind you and you'll lose your teeth.
Yep. It's, and I think it's gotten Yep, I think they could do the same thing there, but.
State funds.
Different, different, uh, different persons who are leaving charge there, so. So that's what we have for, for twenty twenty-five. If you look, and also I'm trying to be somewhat proud instead of what we're spending for multiple dollars every year to make it, that's, that's feasible. I'm sticking around a million dollars, a little higher this year, but like I said, some of that is not gonna get spent with, with right away already being, hopefully some of it already being done. Twenty twenty-six. I have a few four structures and then a little bit of paving. I'll start with the paving, the N thirty-three, we have, we have rehabilitation. That is through Dedham. We left that out when we did the Dedham Royal Road because they're gonna be doing some water main work down there in Dedham. And I don't know for sure when that's gonna be, though, from the last I've heard, they're still working through the process. I kind of have it penciled in for twenty twenty-six. That can move back or maybe even up, depending on how that situation goes. But that's where it sits right now. Same thing with some of these other structures, the L O three, Blumberg Township Line, that's been in the program for a while, that's a it's a box cover, but it's a lot of drought through it. It's kind of a, I'll call it a special box, because it's gonna take some, take some efforts to get that one to work. There's a, there's a pretty good hole on the outlet end of that one.
You're gonna put a box back in there?
Probably, is what we, more than likely we'll do. Probably, but we'll have to figure out how we're gonna handle the outlet and have some sort of spillway or something, so.
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
There's
That drops also.
It does, and that's where maybe we end up doing a cast and place. I, I don't think a bridge is the answer, but I guess.
There's, there's, there's issues there. It's a hill like this, a box cover goes like this. Zach, and then once, so the guardrail on the east side where the deep side is at, actually goes into the ground on the south side. Someone ever gets up on that and then it's been taken right over.
It's another one that's not BR eligible because of the traffic count's not high enough, so it's, again, trying to find a place for that. When you, if it's BR eligible, we obviously have some funds to be able to use physically for that, but these, these local funds, it's, it's hard to shuffle those around to find what's, what's the greatest need, so.
This has been on program long.
It has, it has, and it's not, it's not in danger of really falling in or anything like that, and even capacity-wise, I don't think there's really much, much of an issue. It's just kind of like the grade and the scour issue. L seven, that's another another box cover, again, locally funded, what that one would be. Niece twenty-one, twenty-two will be another box cover. That one is not even technically a bridge, because it's less than twenty feet, I believe, so it's still a box where we would put them in, but it's not on the, the bridge system because it's less than twenty feet. And then O two is a bridge. This one would be a quite, quite long bridge, probably a hundred and forty foot slab, somewhere along those lines. The deck has got some issues on this one. This is, I guess, around the corner from Michelson's, it's be the first bridge north of that road. There's, and there's, there's some, uh, there's another drainage way that comes in right there along there. There's, that's a pretty deep, deep hole. That, that will be an expensive one, but that one.
That was one of the few bridges back when major flood, it didn't just move it.
Right, right. Maybe we should keep it. That one does qualify for, for bridge funds, the ADT. That's where that one sits. Twenty twenty-seven, paving projects, kind of putting them together, but the big one would be M sixty-eight from Arcadia going north of Sac County line. This would be using some of our S V dollars. This is what we approved the application for here earlier this year.
Yeah.
And then balance of foreign-to-market dollars to finish that out. The intent would be to put paved shoulders on that one as well. I think her shoulders are there. Again, we're looking out four years, not knowing exactly what construction costs are, so we'll see. So, and we'll talk to you. The other one I'm kind of putting with that is doing one eighty-fifth going east of Arcadia and then going underneath the, the railroad there back to Highway thirty. And I have talked with Arcadia a little bit because part of that is their road as well, so they're aware of that. But trying to do, we'll try to do at the same time with some local dollars with the same contractor, hopefully it worked out. I eight will be another bridge. This would be a, like a seventy or eighty foot slab. Similar to what we're building right now, northeast of Carroll here. This one is over by the Richland Pit and the gravel. Same thing, it does have the traffic count. That one would be eligible for, for federal aid for reasons of defense, so.
You said that one's on gravel?
Yep, it's just south of the, south of here.
Gotcha, thank you.
And then a few projects in twenty twenty-eight. One that's, a couple of them I've been on there for quite a long time. One new one that is, is new is on A Avenue, this is Green County's bridge, technically south of Ralston on the Green County line. This is another one of those Mike that we split. In this case, they're the lead county on this one, but that's that one is posted slightly. And it's definitely something we want to keep in the loop. It may be one that gets moved forward, but it's something we gotta work with Green County on and when it works for them. But this would be a, would be a bridge that would go back in on that one.
The tracks were bad.
That's a, that's a real short bridge too.
Yep, it's not real long. It'd be longer than what, the new one would be longer than what's there now, but, but, but it is relatively short. It's, it's like a drainage district really that goes underneath that one. Then the other two structures, and then that would be federal aid. You notice that one's a little bit different, so when it's, that's one that's on the foreign-to-market system. So when it's on the foreign-to-market system, you can pay directly, but you can only use eighty percent of the federal bridge funds for it. The other twenty percent has to be local dollars. And you could use F M funds too, depending on what the situation.
That'd be a million dollar deal.
That would be more than a million dollars. For both, both of us, and, and it could be less. Again, we're looking out, looking out five years, so.
So like you break out in green and put this on your radar too, then.
Yep, yep. They, they have the same, they put, they're putting the same, their same half in as well. And, and the other one, this one's probably a little bit higher. It might be a little shorter grid, but you're talking about paving too. You're gonna have bridge approaches and tying into paving, so. The other two bridges on those bridges, which would be east of Willie, that's been on the list for quite a long time. That's probably not enough money. It's probably gonna be more than that when it's all said and done. It does qualify for, for federal aid. It's, it is posted, but it's
That's the old metal one that goes across.
The alignment's the biggest problem with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Jock, get around and get through it.
And then the drain twelve outlet is another structure that probably would be a box, but that's something we need to dive, dive further into as well. That's been on the list. It's, it's where we're drainage well outlets and, and crosses the road right there, so. There have been multiple different designs. I think that's been coming up. That was really fast going through a lot of projects, but
You took up, there's, used to always had a grading project going, video, they've been on there and never just gotten any words from.
Um, I'll have to check into that. That, so I don't think anymore.
No, it's south, where Renzi High Bridge used to be on, from outside.
I know what you're talking about, but I don't think it's been on the programs since I've been here, so I know Dave took it off.
Yeah, it's been off the last couple. I just got it. As I, and as I, you had said earlier, this is a
There's a lot of, there's a lot of projects and a lot of dollars here. I mean, to think that we, if you had five years, if we kind of get all these done, I'll say there's no way it won't happen, but we're trying to plan and trying to plan accordingly to what we can do and
That Hamilton's Bridge has been on there ever since I've been here.
It's been on there a long time.
What's the traffic count, you know?
On that one? Forty, forty-five, it's, it's still up there.
Yeah. It's crazy because a lot of, you know, I was would go north and not go south setting more than me.
Yep, there's, there's not very, because of the posting and because of the, the corner, it just doesn't work with traffic. But from, just from general farm traffic, and there's still a lot of people that get across that way. I think I sent it to you, but the actual program is about eight pages that you can cut off, looks like this. That's all the same information that's been here. It's just, that's, that's what we what the, what the program spits out of it, we have approved potentially for for the state. There's no questions on that. I talked about the budget a little bit.
So, so the drain outlet is basically, because it is a bridge, but just has to be the drain. In the same structure.
That's just what the name was.
Yeah, I was kind of wondering, since when do drains get involved?
Right. I, I'm not sure what size outlet that is there, but it's pretty big, I remember. I think there's needs to be some cleaning out down there as well. I think it's, it's certainly been some not real bad, but that would be part of it, I would think.
Using on this current, your shoulder, and you think you got contractors pretty well available?
I don't know. I really haven't done, go into that yet. I, I hope there is, but it'd really be nice to get it done this fall, but we'll see. Obviously, gotta get this right away bought so we can, that's, that's the big, big trigger. The other thing that's not on this program, because it'd be, it'd be a local thing, but we talked about briefly, I don't know, maybe since you two have been on here, we haven't, but the puck intersection down there, which would be the south end of M sixty-six. Auden County is working on that as well. They got some rise funding on the Puck's expansion to do some intersection improvements, I'll call it, down there to widen those to make better turning movements. They're still moving forward with that. I don't know if construction's gonna happen this year, but they're still working on trying to get it possible to let this year for, for next year, so that'd be going on with some of this as well. So that'd be going on with some of this as well.
So like, if they get the funding for that, will you have to do the north two parts of that intersection, or do they do it all as a whole broad of them?
It'd be one project that'd be together, and we'll work together, um, and I'm not sure.
They supply the funding though?
Yes, well, the, the, the rise grant will supply most of the funding, I'm not sure if there'd be a little bit of a local match on that or not. I haven't talked with, mentioned that recently, but it'd be, it'd be minimal for what the whole thing is, and it's not a, it's not a huge project, it's really not going very far. The end of return is going, you know, maybe a hundred feet, a hundred feet north.
Turning lanes is basically what it is.
Basically, and it's not even a turning lane, this is, it's paved shoulder is what it really is, and nothing else, so.
Which is nice though.
Because they couldn't, they were trying to get turning lanes, but the traffic lines wouldn't warrant turning on, turning lanes, the, the grant wouldn't pay for those. So that's why they, I mean, it's, it, I mean, the traffic lines are definitely higher than what they have been. But to get to a turning lane, it's gotta be substantial.
They'd want, want to go on north there from the south, we don't mean.
And a lot of the traffic goes south there, goes, goes down to eighty, I mean, that's really where a lot of it ends up going, but.
Yeah.
You know how that goes.
Yeah.
That.
They're gonna redo that, right?
That, well.
Bringing it up and you're bringing it down.
I think they're, they're, they have theirs in the plan for fiscal year twenty-four as well, hopefully can get them both done, uh, next summer. Yeah, we'll hope those, but again, we gotta get our.
Do you know how far they will go on theirs?
Um, I was thinking it was five miles, but I can't remember how far it is. Is that where that, yeah, I, I'd have to double check. It's more than our three miles, I know that.
They've always used called the Huffman Boulevard, now I'm not sure what it's called.
Okay. It could be further than that, but that's what I remember off. The budget looks very similar to what we talked about before. It's, there, there's a little bit of difference because of, um, what you show for reimbursements. Um, I think the carryover balance was a little bit different than what we had showed before. And then the other thing is, is basically adding in those two projects. Um, like if you look at, uh, the second page there, the, the, uh, F A bridge replacement funds. Showing four hundred and twenty-five thousand of receipts in there, so that's where the revenue's coming in. I had constructions four hundred and twenty-five thousand higher than what we had in our local budget, so. Um, other than that, all the other, um, you know, roadway maintenance, general roadway, those items, those are the same. Is what we talked about for the local budget. And then engineering as well. Yeah. Questions on specifics on that, my, my, all means can talk about it, but all that's pretty much a repeat of what we discussed. A month ago or six weeks ago, I think it was.
Do they have any questions? Let's move along to your.
You need a, you need a motion on how to improve the volume, they can be, they can be together, they'd be separate, whatever you guys would like.
For the five-year program.
There's a five-year program and a secondary road budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the secondary roads five-year program for the Iowa Department of Energy expectations.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The post motion carries.
They're here, sorry.
Are you just doing the five-year program as a motion, not the budget? Then we're gonna do the budget.
I'm, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the budget, secondary road budget. Second that.
There's a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The post motion carries.
All right, next thing on the list is equipment. Um, I did, did get a quote on a motivator for this year twenty-four. Things are more expensive than they were a year ago. But, I think that's been pretty evident with everything else that we've dealt with, for other. Other, uh, materials, products, and even equipment, if you're looking at it.
Well, this is up more than sixty thousand from what you told us originally.
It's about sixty-five more than what it was last year. We did get a little more for our trade than last, from last year, about, oh, I believe it's about eight, eight thousand eighty-five hundred more. So we did get a little bit more out of that, had to push to get that a little bit even, but, uh. Um, it's, it's a different world.
Question, we're on the, with like the city and the county, they're putting them, ours may be online, the powers online. Have you ever looked at, to see what like auction would bring on them, and that used one or not?
Yep, I did, I did, that's, that's how I got them to come up a little bit on their trade price. Um, it, it, a lot of the ones online that you see, they're, we're in the right ballpark, they'll have. Uh, I'll call it destruction, motivators will have bigger tires sometimes, and they'll have a ripper on the back and things like that.
Okay.
Which we don't have, we have a, a wing.
Seriously.
But nobody, nobody wants that, they don't want a snow wing, so, um, so we did look into that, um. There's a chance we could get more, could get less. Um, it's a little bit easier process, I guess, when you're trading it in, because the money's coming off the top instead of having another debit and credit. Um, and then as well, they're, they're making this commitment to these dollars. Basically for a year from now, this is a, this is probably twelve to fourteen months out. So, um, they're making that commitment, but they're still gonna give us that twelve to fourteen months now, and we can use it, it'd be, it'd be a spare machine at this point. And then, you know, we used every. But we still, but we still have that opportunity where if we, uh, to, to auction it. You can auction it now and get a price, and now you don't have it, or you waited a year, uh, what's the price is gonna do in a year? Might get better, might not, so. So, one thing I, I will mention about, about Ziegler as well. Um, they are, I believe, moving to Carroll. Um, it's, uh, something that they're, they're working on, on the location, but I've been, been assured that property's been bought. And they're gonna be coming to Carroll, so.
I was under their impression that it was gonna be one of the distribution of parts. Are they looking to have a service space?
I think it's gonna be full blown, I think it's gonna be ag, like construction, and it's gonna be service as well as parts, it may not start off with service right away. And I think, but I think the.
I think their intentions about it will be.
The end game is that, I think they're building, building the facility to be that, I know, from what I understand, so. Which is, uh, that'd be a good thing.
Right now, they came out four dodge.
Right now, the, where we, where we get parts out of is generally four dodge, and could get Atlantic or Altona, I mean, that's kind of where your. Three main places are, so the four dodges are normal.
So they say they'll have it in twelve, fourteen months, the new?
Yep.
They're pretty confident in that?
I think they feel pretty confident about that.
I mean, the way it's gonna go on this.
We're waiting, well, we're waiting on a, we're waiting on our motivator for fiscal year twenty-three, that's supposedly the end of April, that's when that one's coming, so.
But you also got two trucks that are way overdue too, huh?
Four trucks, but they're not, they're not necessarily way overdue, but they're a little bit past, so, but those should, they're on track to be coming this summer, so. Unfortunately, it's the, the game we're playing, because, um, it's hard to get anything. It does sound like the timelines are not getting longer, but they're catching up a little bit, but it's just, depends on the, on the vendor and the piece of equipment that we'll do as well.
Is this what you had budgeted roughly?
Yep.
I know, when I first started, I think it was about, same year, it's about two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Sure about more than that then?
Yeah, that'd be all used too then.
What were you thinking? No, it's a, it's a big commitment, uh, but it's one of the things where we gotta stay, stay after, should we put the use thing in?
They used to come with a steering wheel, now they don't.
Yeah.
Uh, it is what it is, I mean, uh. You know, sad part is you can't go out and do another bid on them, you're committed to zero.
Right, right. Yep, maybe we can.
If you understand that they got.
Yes.
Certainly they have. Same way with John, we went to the John Doe, it'd be the same way.
And they're, they are pretty, they, they know where they're at, they're, they're pretty, they're pretty. On par with others, they know each other, counties talk, so I mean, it's not all the specs are exactly the same. But for the most part, they're all really close.
So you don't think there's any wiggle on this there with Japan, you know, typically we've always squeezed another thousand, three thousand, blah, blah.
I squeezed about five out of the trade in. It, it took a little bit, that's why this, this, this conversation started probably three weeks to a month.
So you, you think you got the legwork done already?
I, there, there's, there's, this is, this is about where we're, we're, we're at, I think.
Well, then out of that case, I will make a motion to authorize the. Purchase quote for two thousand point four motor greater with a trade in. For net dollars of three hundred and eighty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. Holy crap, that's a lot for one just.
A second, all right, there's been a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The post. Motion carries.
Uh, department update, uh, continuing to work on the bridge, um, they're still working on, starting, we're gonna start driving pile this week. On the north side for the, for the pier, um. We'll see what Mother Nature does, we've had a lot of, whether it's, whether it's been weather or wind, that's kind of slowed things down a little bit, but, uh. It's, looks like it's starting to turn the right direction hopefully, so.
So, so they get the pile done on the, on the south side?
South side, the abutment and the pier are both done. They moved, they moved the crane around to the north side, and they're, they're working on their cofferdane, I'm not sure if they got that all done, but, uh. They, they'll be driving pile this week same time. Um, also, we have our open mechanic position that closes today, the end of the day, so we'll see how many more applicants we get in. We have six applicants right now, which is, which is not bad, um, for a mechanic position. Um, okay, there's a couple more trickle in yet, but, uh. Start going through the interview process and see what we can figure out there.
I'm just surprised you got that many.
I'm G, six of them. Yep.
It's a fiber company that backed into, kind of, yeah.
Yep, they started, they started born last week, um, sounds like that's going okay. Um, I think they're gonna start plowing as well, um, this, we'll see what Mother Nature does, but, uh. The, I think most of the frost is out, I don't think that's gonna be a problem. Um, it's just about how wet it is and what, what the road conditions are working like, so. I, I'm assuming they'll be here for a good part of the summer. Get that project finished.
Perfect, appreciate it. Anybody else have any more? You wanna stick around, not at the table, but I want you to, um, stick around for item number four.
Absolutely.
Okay, next item on the agenda is to approve the plaque for, uh, Jared Huffman. And I think, if I'm correct, they're checking the fence lines. The proprietor is Deb Reesberg and Patty McCoy.
I didn't see any access to get to it.
I have questions on this one, because. So I see, so Rhonda. Is section, or the, the section seventy-nine, seventy-four, or seventy-eight. And then the access to that.
That's, that is family is the most then?
Yeah, yeah, Rhonda's his mom, the family Huffman trust, I assume that's them as well. But then you got Mildred Huffman Eternal, so I was just a little confused. Is this just to do fencing? This whole section right here is a little, is a little tricky.
Yeah, there's no access, I mean, they're landlocked.
They are landlocked, I don't think the purpose of this is to build, they couldn't.
No, I think it's, it's splitting up property amongst families.
Okay. We've got, so am I, am I right here, is, is it the dark black where it's?
I think it's a lot of A and B.
Yeah, yeah. There's, that's, yeah.
Or kingdom. A and B.
But again, thirds dividing.
But there's not, I guess it doesn't matter, if it's farmland, it can be less than an acre. Gotcha, okay. Here, it's hard to read, because the.
From what I brought.
One's ten acres, one's twenty.
I just wanted to make sure I understood this.
I look, yeah, yeah, computer, it's made me feel like, how are we gonna get to it, or what are they doing, but so they're dividing farm ground amongst family.
See, rather than I think that Norton's the mother of Robert's. Was your grandmother, mother.
Mike's one, okay, I just, I was confused, and well, there can't ever be anything built, because you're right, it wasn't. I can double check with Sarah too, if you guys would like me to.
I don't think there's.
I, I agree with Gina's.
All right, in order for a motion. Nobody wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the flats. I can second that.
All right, there's a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All right, item number four, discuss right by permit, um, process, and I care if you want to come up for this too. Okay. Um, so I was reached out to by, um, Roseanne on behalf of two people. That would like to. Set up, trying to get my parents here, watch the sign war, this ordinance. They would like to, um, set up a station, if you will, and sell things, um, on them. You're talking about Mount Carmel? Um, I forwarded on to Zach their request as well, because they want to close a road. And Zach has no problem with closing up a road, but kind of want to pull everybody together and see what the process is, like, how do we want to go about this? Because I know some counties utilize public health to watch over these permits. Um, I just kind of want to bring everybody to the table and see. The city has an ordinance, um, they charge for permits. We had not discussed that, I know we have an ordinance in place, but I kind of wanted to bring everybody together and see what we wanted to do as far as permits and.
We charged last time, Courtney?
We didn't have it.
We didn't have a request.
And we didn't charge, we were gonna charge at the end of the ordinance.
This time they're going through an unincorporated area, which is probably too unincorporated, I think Maple River's gonna get some too.
Last time they came. And they stayed overnight in Carroll. They, we didn't have any, because I can't find a, happy, you say they're supposed to get a. Permit for me, I don't find that, no. Just so you're aware of that, we don't have a permit.
Order's in place for it, but we don't have it, yeah.
No, and wasn't a big deal last time around. Or see that other counties. Okay, so this is what it says, the ladies from Mount Carmel are Miss Loneman and Miss Benami. They plan to hire Iowa beer bust for the beer sales. He is a friend of Ray Bright and has been doing this for Southern, he provides the beer and the two food vendors and the band. He would have the dram insurance and the liquor license, Mount Carmel just needs to get a flack rate from him. I would like to have permission to close Mount Carmel ad to use this for the beer bust, which obviously he has his own insurance and everything like that. Um, thanks for your help, let me know if you need anything else, cheers.
Well, the simplest part is all we have to do is make a resolution, close that during a certain time period.
Other communities, when there's been, uh, to be a celebration or whatever, and that's not up to Rome, it's a, it's a dead end, or it goes into the cemetery, basically there.
Or they're not.
What would be the west side of the church?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought, I thought made her talk.
It technically is.
It is, but it's a dead end.
It's really, it's probably put a couple signs up down at the, at the east west county road and at Berkeley. And we would just find ahead of time and make one, something up.
Okay, so that's not, that's not an issue.
Should not be an issue.
So are they gonna make them go up and around? And around to get in there, if they close that road off?
But, no, no one goes in that road, it's just west of the church, so.
Right, and if they close it, are they gonna barricade it so people can't get their bikes off? That spot, and then they can go up. Duel and around?
I would assume they just put a couple barricades in there.
Will still be space. One of my things is that I don't want people trying to take a shortcut through yards, we've got septic systems on the church and on the rectory. Um, we don't want them cutting through the property to.
There'd be one, one or two barricades that are spaced out, with plenty of room there, it's, it's a pretty wide intersection. And, and if there was, we'll. Put one barricade there.
Impeding traffic to try to pull off through some narrow little gap.
The road just goes back to their, gathered to the.
Up the entrance.
Other than going to the, to the. Reception or. Reception hall or whatever that. Generation, that building, unless you're going to that or going to the cemetery, there's even no reason to drive that way, so. I'm sure the people in town are gonna be not driving, cause they're gonna be.
It just feel like their towns. Block that off every.
I don't have, and, and Zach didn't have a problem blocking it off, I think we need to have the discussion, are we going to charge for a permit? Are we gonna come up with a permit and make sure that anybody have, that's getting a permit? We have to make sure if they're gonna be selling stuff, they have the proper insurance. I'm okay with not charging the permit fee, but that's my opinion, and that's up to you guys, I know the city. This is their vendor fees, um, for nonprofit and not for profit is two hundred and fifty, for profits, four hundred. Expansion of businesses, four hundred.
And ordinance don't have a. Well, as far as I'm saying, we do, I, we do charge a permit fee, it needs to be. Minimal, just to cover our costs. Otherwise, I don't think we'd like it, it's not in that ordinance, I feel like we don't charge. My opinion.
I think we might get one or two. I have no problem not charging the twenty-five dollars in that fee, but that's up to the board. Then we'll have to come up with some kind of permit, and I can be sent walking to. I talked to Taylor Boyle in the DIA, so DIA has a team of people who will be out early. Starting to do inspections, making sure that they're licensed to do food. Uh, I assume the sheriff's office is also gonna be out, we've got somebody set up somewhere that they don't feel is safe for the riders in the roadway, they will say. They will stop and say, you can't be here, do you have a permit to be here? I'm not sure what you want us to do, we're gonna be in town, Maggie is on the right right committee for Carol. She's on the safety committee part of that, so we're already gonna be in town, probably doing some public health stuff. We don't need to be adding any more vehicles to that.
No, no, I don't think that's realistic to say you're gonna be driving in and going checking things, and other people are already all.
Yes, we already have DIA out there, I think when I talked to Taylor, I talked to her this morning. Um, I've already sent her the map information about Mount Carmel and the contact people for Mount Carmel. Like, is when you get permits, that you notify those people to contact her immediately? So she's in direct contact with them, instead of us being the middle person.
That makes sense.
You know, so our, our thing would be, you get a permit, you give them. Taylor for food, anyway, for food. Um, you give them her contact information so she can deal with them. She's got my number, she wants the sheriff's office non-emergency line number, she'd like to know who the. Contact person would be for the board, whether that's one of you or whether that's Courtney. And if, she knows she can contact me and I'll try to get her whatever she needs.
You can give her my contact information, um, I will forward on this email that I received from the two ladies, so that.
I already did that.
You did, I did send that to her, just so she was aware of what I was.
So she has, um, I forwarded a couple emails from Taylor this morning to Courtney. I don't know if you forwarded them out, but there's some information in there. There's been some questions she had, I've already sent her the ordinance, so she already has the county ordinance. She already has the information for Mount Carmel, um, I'll give her the information for the sheriff's department and Stephanie's information. There's some guidelines about, um, events, you're gonna have more, was it more than eleven? Eleven or more food and beverage vendors, then they, there's needs to be an event license they need to apply for, I don't think Mount Carmel's gonna apply. Qualify, you got the one beer guy and then the two foods and. That's not eleven, so, um. Again, for safety, I hope that the sheriff's office at some point is getting people out of Mount Carmel and getting them down to Carol. It's the beer guy sets up where he sets up. So he can get them before they get here. Make money off of them up there, but at some point you need to.
Cause I'm pushing on breed at four thirty, so I'm sure they'll push it on there by five, I bet. So, have you talked to any of the counties as far as a permit, they have a.
I did, and I got one response, and they said our public health department handles it. So no sense in both of us.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, we need to be working together.
Yeah, I, I guess I would go and suggest whoever gets a hold of somebody with a copy of men. Why, why reinvent the wheel?
Right, and it, I don't think it needs to be very detailed, I think you just need to name where they're gonna be, map wise.
I could reach out to them and see if they have a permit, we could just.
Right, but it's. But they say rag right control location. I think what we're talking about today is waiving the fee, but they still have to go through the permit.
Yes. My, my only thought with the permit is if you're using county resources, why not charge them something? We're using them, you're using public health, you're using the sheriff's office. You know, they're, they're out there to make money, I mean, I'm just specific, we're talking about Mount Carmel, they're there to make money and then give. You know, Mount Carmel people a little bit of the action, but, um. If, if you're using county, county resources to make sure that they're doing what they should be doing, then maybe they should be reimbursing this somehow. It's just my thought.
I don't.
I can afford it.
I think we know enough information to make decisions today.
But.
Do we know enough information, uh, sure, are we gonna decide anything today?
No, I just wanted to bring everybody together, yeah.
I mean, I think if you do decide to charge a fee, that you're gonna have to amend the sort.
That's what I mean, that's, it's.
My other thing is, what resources are we actually using?
We already made an amendment, and it doesn't have no money in there, so it's hard to, like, theirs is in there. And, and there's also, I, I did make the statement, I said I'd talk minimal. But at the same time, there's a part of being supported too.
But you hope that the, uh, money we're not charging them goes back to Mount Carmel. It's like community inheritance. The county is not charging you, so please make sure that whatever we could have charged you. Goes into what you're giving them.
And I hope that they're doing something like that.
So, my last question on Ray Bright, and then we're gonna get to this presentation, but. Um, I did get another email. And they would like to. First, I'm just gonna. Express this, and it's probably not a great thing to say, but it's funny, I'm a little disappointed because nobody at this table has been brought to that conversation. We're gonna keep getting emails and questions and things, and nobody from the county was brought to the table, that, just a little disappointed. Um, because you're right, they are gonna be utilizing county resources and. It's just, it would have been nice to then have a voice up the table, but I received another question, um. Could Ray by committee hang a sign over a hundred and eighty street where the bikers will come into town? We will put tractors with loader buckets extended up into the. One of the young Van Wells property and one then Travis's property, and hang a welcome banner from the buckets. Um, I don't think they have talked to the private owners of those businesses yet, but I wanted to bring it by you, do you have an issue with hanging signs like that? Do you want me to refer this question to your office?
Yeah, why don't you do that? I don't think.
And I know they haven't talked to those businesses yet too, and they make emails, we don't want it, so.
Just overall safety, I guess. When do they set it up, what time do they take it down? Yeah. Cause, cause I mean, I don't know if they're, I don't know if they call it out, with no vehicle traffic at all, or is there any vehicle traffic as well, cause I mean. They need to make sure you.
I'm gonna assume.
It's still gonna have to be open for pu- public safety.
For ambulance and.
So I, there's, there's, there's multiple things that go on.
So Carrie, you'll get back to us if, uh, you get a formal permit, and then do you want, just kinda, if we get any more requests for permits, just.
Do you want me to handle the permit? I mean, they can pick them up, we put them on the website, they can get them from the website, they can. Drop them off to either our office or Courtney, just depends on how, how much.
And then all we're, we're kind of just a pass through, right, cause then we're just gonna hand it off to. These, who would you say? Taylor.
She's DIA, so she's only gonna do food.
Okay.
So if you got somebody who wants to set up on a corner and sell t-shirts or something, she's not going to address them.
Okay.
Uh, but like I said, we're gonna have the sheriff's office out, I'm, I'm assuming there's gonna be more communication.
Hopefully, ma- if Maggie's on the, the board with City Carroll, maybe she knows more than we don't.
Well, she only knows what's going on in the City of Carroll, so she's not gonna be dealing with the unincorporated.
There's someone that is in charge of the, uh. I volunteer good more, so if you can make a contact point.
I, there, there's gotta be a point where they get in contact with the engineer, and they get in contact with the sheriff, and they're getting in contact with. You know, um, emergency medical services, and I know that Taylor wants to talk to Sarah with emergency management. So I think they're, right now they're reaching out to start those conversations.
I know Jamie Wicker has gone to two meetings, and I think the follow-ups on those aren't coming till May.
Okay. Yeah, so we just kinda wanna get our ducks in a row now, and then. You know, as more information comes. Taylor, you know, she's gonna be talking about whatever they're doing up in Berita. Litning the next day on their way out, so they're gonna be, they're gonna be around. And the sheriff's office is gonna be heavily involved, so.
Well, thank you for coming over, okay. Alright, next item on the agenda is the next link internet presentation, and we have some people that are joining us.
I'm gonna share what I saw on the screen.
They actually are not gonna be joining us, they only have thirty minutes blocked out and stepped out.
Okay. Yeah, cause they only go thirty minutes, but in my defense, I told her, I thought it'd be around nine thirty, so that's probably my fault, but I. That's a, this is gonna take this time, I guess. So I'm guessing.
It's not your fault, cause I actually thought we'd be ready at nine thirty.
They'll probably reach out to me again, are you guys okay if I just carry on for next week?
It may not be next week, so we might, it could potentially, but we got some stuff to get, you know, about after the meeting. Okay, next item on the agenda is manure management. Alright. We have Lane Bachman, section thirty-six, Jackson Township, Calhoun County. No changes. Birch Finisher Farms, section eight, Arcadia Township. Changed crop rotation or optimum yield, used manure analysis. Floyd Plucky, section thirty-two, Newton Township, no changes. N and M Farm, section three, Washington Township, no changes. Benson Finisher Farm, section thirty-five, Sac Township, Sac County. Changed crop rotation or optimum yields, used manure analysis. Pig Oats Oaks, section thirty-one, Roselle Township. They submitted original plan. PI three sixty-four, section seven, Wheatland Township, added acres, and now we will go into committee reports.
Tuesday night I had policy council. Went through the. Programming for. And all the health and safety classroom, uh, they had a few issues that have been corrected. We also, uh, looked at some of the school district partnerships updates. It looks like we're possibly gonna have, uh, more react. We'll be working more with Jefferson, uh, dip school district, that they're probably putting more families on the all days there. And also at walkie, we're, we're in discussions there of having a partnership there also. And, uh, that was basically the rest of all review policies and procedures that we do annually. And again, that, then the policy council, cops also proved the change in the cola. Originally, they came out with four percent from the federal, and then they add another one point six, so total five point six. Then Wednesday, it was at the courthouse remodel thing we had downstairs. And then also Wednesday afternoon, attended a Vietnam, uh, program out to airport. And this week I have. Care County Growth Partnerships meeting at noon, I think there's a presentation, I'm not sure about who, so. And that's all subject to change.
Last week on Tuesday night was the kickoff meeting for the comprehensive plan for the county. Next meeting, I think it's April twenty-sixth. So it was just a kickoff, um, information gathering meeting. Wednesday afternoon, I attended the. Vietnam Veterans War Memorial, um, celebration at the airport. This week, I Tuesday tomorrow at noon, CCGP. Lunch meeting. And I will not be at the region twelve meeting Thursday night, that's all.
You ready? Last week I was at the meeting at the courthouse at nine AM on Wednesday.
Me too, Courtney, sorry.
With meetings and. Um, the afternoon I met with, uh, Mr. Hunsinger at Region Twelve, learned a little bit more about that. At night, um, at six, we went to Vietnam service. And that is it for me. Maybe the Region Twelve on Thursday night at six, policy, policy.
Um, so I also went to the Vietnam Veterans Program last Wednesday. Um, had a Republican Women's Club meeting Saturday. And then I went this morning to the central committee. I have the newspaper and radio today. Tomorrow I'm gonna spend some time working on the comprehensive plan survey that Sarah sent out. And she did say she wanted those by Friday. And then. Uh, on the Wednesday, I have a Carol County tour with Dalton. And I'm leaving for vacation. I will go last. Last week, I, same meetings as the rest of the group, S C H Construction, H V A C discussions. Went to the airport for the Vietnam, but ceremony at Central Committee this morning. It's coming, I have a G I S meeting, put conversation with Sarah after this meeting. And then I have Region Twelve Policy Council, and I have Region Twelve Executive Policy Council. There's a few things I wanna bring up during committee reports, cause they're not agenda ideas and they're just discussion topics, but I do, whoever's doing the radio and newspaper today. The signage. On the police station has been changed, so they are directed now to go. To the new jail. So it's no longer on the courthouse.
It used to be on the east side of the courthouse with, uh, after hours, moving to button.
And now they're directed to go to the jail.
Sure, and make that noted now.
Yeah. There was that. Oh, did you get anything back from Tyler about the pay? They haven't responded. Keep reminding me to remind me to remind you.
Well, I, I, it'll be a while, because they aren't, I mean, super quick.
And that's okay, I just, I saw this in the last, um. Paste up that came out, and I just wanted to double check that, I'll just keep it in my drawer. And then the final thing I wanted to bring up is. Some of the furniture that's gonna be moved from, or items that are gonna be moved from the. Some of the furniture that's gonna be moved from, or items that are gonna be moved from the. Top level down to, they're going to be temporary space. Have we discussed who's gonna be doing any of that moving?
Wouldn't that be in state, that'd be their cost?
Nope.
Nope.
They pay for their, I mean, they pay for their equipment. And everything.
What furniture has to be moved, all their desks and.
Okay.
Things, the thing is, is. We are required to provide them space. Therefore, I believe, since we're making them move out of their space, we probably are responsible.
I just.
So you'll see on the next bill, they will, they have a bill in there from um, edits. For moving Sherry and Carrie.
Just curious, what was that amount?
I, I don't know off the top of my head, but I can tell you after the meeting, I'm gonna get it out. I would assume that that might be a good.
Who, who was that?
Um, edit highway thirty.
Well, I was gonna suggest, I mean, Zach's gotten up on his plate.
Yeah.
I, I think we just heard somebody.
As somebody that oversees him, I would rather him not be responsible for doing that. This guy.
Yeah, so our next meeting is with S H on the twenty, or on the seventeenth, do you think we can wait? I mean, that gives us a full. Even after that conversation, it gives us a full month before that happens, I know Sherry wants an answer.
Well, I don't know, it wouldn't hurt to maybe reach out to Bert, isn't, it's this thing. That runs it, destroying a total blank.
Fine.
If somebody would wanna maybe reach out to him and put a bug in his ear, that we may, the, you know, just so they can maybe get it on their schedule tentatively.
Cause I don't know of another moving company.
Um, I was thinking maybe like odd jobs would be.
Oh.
They had a tire job, jobs dude, carries.
Okay, so, so let's just reach out.
I do.
Our jobs. It does not.
Also the Molox, you know, them, that they.
Okay, so do you, you want me to reach out to, I. I can reach out to the Molox, that's me. And just kinda, do we wanna quote, I mean, just an idea?
Yes, yes.
I would assume it probably be, I would think it'd be less than. Moving somebody, cause they're gonna be on site.
Yeah.
So they won't have to load it on a truck and.
They'll be busy that day.
They're just gonna be moving from there.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to have that conversation, so I wanna follow up with Sherry.
And show them all the stuff they got moved, give a quote on it.
And obviously, we don't know, but I'm sure Holly or. The clerk of court can. Direct that.
Right, okay.
And as far as the IT part of it, where they're hooking stuff up, the state will do that, so Dalton will have to do that, but we do need to make sure that we have some.
Cause they tentatively can close the first and the second.
The courts can, so that'll be a good timing for them.
Yeah.
If the basement or if the ground.
That'll just be before our meeting.
We'll have nine o'clock, so you guys will be there.
Yeah.
Seventeen, May?
No.
April.
Of April.
Yeah, in two weeks.
Eight.
At eight o'clock, it should be.
I think it is, yeah.
It's also tax day. Anybody's excited for that? Pay your taxes, you're a super loser.
Lead by example.
Okay. All right, with that, I think we're in order for a gentleman.
So moved.
One second, there's a motion in a second, any more discussion, if not, that was in favor, signify.